I call the Hammonds County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. January the 18th, 2022. Welcome everyone that's in attendance. We're glad you're here safe and sound. And at this time, we're gonna have our pledge of allegiance. Invite everyone to anticipate and immediately following that, we'll have our invocation.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. And most graciously, Heavenly Father, hallowed be thy name. Dear Lord, we thank you for life itself. We thank you for all the blessings that you have given unto each of us. We thank you for the health that you have given unto us. And Lord, as we enter into this new year, we ask you to give us board the wisdom and the strength to do what is right for the citizens of this county. Not for just a few, but for the majority. We thank you for this board. We thank you for the staff. We thank you for public safety, dear Lord. Especially the ones that get out and put their life on the line whenever they are needed or called. We ask you to be with us now throughout this meeting. The things that we say and do will be for the betterment of this community. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay. Setting of agenda and items? Ms. Adams?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There's a request to amend the agenda to include the MOU with the town of Pamplin. And this would be to the utility grant funds.
Okay, let's call that eight A. Eight A. Any other items? Any items from the supervisors? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as is?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second. Second. Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is that citizen public comment period. This time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to these citizens. No individual, citizen, shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. No one signed up? Anyone that would like to address the board and just failed to sign up? Hearing none. We'll go right into our citizen public comment period. Well, we've just had that, excuse me. We're going to our action items. And first on the list is electoral board budget requests. Attached for the board's review is a request from Patricia Morton, registered for an additional FY22 budget funds in the amount of $13,792. Additionally, business board requesting a line item transfer of $1,500 from 1301-3006 to 1301-3002. Okay. Ms. Adams, anything you can add to this?
Ms. Morton is present if the board has questions.
Oh, yes, good, okay. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Fine. Welcome you and Mr. Poynter.
Yes, Frank Poynter is here as well. So, I wanted to answer questions, but the first thing I wanted to say is I'm actually not asking for quite that much. So, the $1,500 that I wish to transfer offsets a little bit of that $15,000. So, I'm asking for $13,792 for the electoral board budget. So, we squeezed and transferred where we could to try to cut it down a little bit. But all of this represents, except for the last thing of advertising, is required things that need to be done with our election equipment and preparing our ballots for a assumed June election, because we pretty much have a primary every year now. And our budget really only covers about one and a half elections. It doesn't fully cover two elections. So, this is trying to make up the difference. The first two items are required upgrades to our systems that we thought were going to be happening later, but the state required all of the vendors to upgrade their machines for security purposes last year. We saved the county about $5,000 by rolling our annual maintenance, our time of actually doing the maintenance. We deferred it from before the November election to February, where we're trying to schedule it now, so that the upgrades and the normal maintenance of machines could be done at the same time. So, last year, we had a budget request of $13,000 for those first two items. And now they're coming in at just under $8,000. Then, next item is additional funds. Like I said, we come to elections, they're not fully funded. And this is where I believe that we are short for getting ballot preparations done for the June election that we're assuming is going to happen, either a dual primary or a single primary. The repairs and maintenance item, the fourth on your list there, that's the annual maintenance that we need to keep up our 25 voting machines so they work correctly. Again, we had requested that in the budget for this year. It was not put into our budget, but it still has to be done. We have to maintain these machines so they work properly. Then the final thing that we're adding is new, that's advertising. And that's to discuss redistricting and potentially relocation that we hope to do of some polling locations, so that the public will be made aware of them and the public will know there are going to be public hearing on this. That's it in a nutshell. Unfortunately, it's not a whole lot under our control. This has to be spent in order to do the elections. I'm happy to answer questions, or Frank can answer questions if you have questions.
Floor is open for discussion. Any questions for Mrs. Morton?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips.
Is the $900 for the advertising, is that based on actual cost of estimated ad runs, or what's the?
Estimated ad runs based on what we did in the past. So, that would be two ads, two very small ads in The Times-Virginian, just to try to get a little more public awareness.
Well, to add to that, we will be, if we move these polling places, we will be required to advertise our public hearings in the newspaper.
While we're on that subject, Mr. Hips didn't open up. I was gonna ask the question. Why would there be a duplication? And I say duplication, because we have to do the same thing.
Right.
I think for clarification, we would advertise for the public hearing. They would put ads in for the relocation of three polling places if that's determined to create public awareness. Is that correct?
Yes.
You know, that, we haven't gotten to the point of, we anticipate the public comments, the public hearing, but we haven't, this budget doesn't, isn't for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hank.
If these items are like annual maintenance needed and then it looks like, you know, we knew that batteries were coming up, was there anything placed in last year's budget in anticipation?
I'm, I'm not sure. We just?
I didn't understand the question.
Can I answer that?
Since annual maintenance comes up every year, how much was put in the current budget for annual maintenance? We knew that we have, we have to do manual maintenance every year. Why all of a sudden do we have?
Why do we suddenly have it? It was not there in past years, because it was rolled into our initial contract for the purchase of the machines in 2015. So, we had to add it in as a secondary thing last year. And we have to do it again because it was not approved, even though we came and spoke to you folks last year about how this has to be done every year. It was not added to our budget, so.
I'm like Mr. Hank, I don't understand why it wasn't there. But I think it sounds like be a good idea to put it in there for future reference.
We are from now on, yes.
It will definitely be in our 23 budget request.
And one of those requests for was for the batteries replacement. And those are an expendable item. When they get, where they're not reaching, holding their charge, they have to be replaced. It's not a specific date when we have to do that.
Mr. Chairman. On the batteries, is there a specific date, or is this something that these batteries could last until the 20, the next budget year, instead of having to add it on this between now and June?
I talked with our vendor about that two weeks ago specifically, because, you know, we haven't had trouble with the machines. And he said that they recommend that they're upgraded at least every five years. We're pushing on six now, since we got the machines in 2015.
This will be the seventh year for them.
That's true. You're right. We're over six.
Some of, some of the batteries did not hold charge last year. When they were unplugged, they were, the battery.
So, yeah, it's, it's our belief and with his advice that these need replacing at this time. And it's about every five years that they need replacing. These are large batteries that will keep the voting machines running when the power goes out, which it has apparently in mathematics at some elections. And it'll keep the voting machine running, I think it's for six hours.
Six to eight hours.
They're pretty substantial. That's why they're so expensive.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
If I could ask the question about the ballot printing for having dual primaries this summer, do we know that we'll have dual primaries yet?
No. We don't, we don't know that we'll even have one primary yet.
Not for certain.
Not, we will not know that till March.
So, here's what we did, is we looked at what it costs us to print the ballots and get the audio votes made up. That's an expensive piece as well. All of the services that go into preparing for an election. And our estimate was that it would be a bit lower than a fall election, because we had four ballots last fall, as you would know. And we only expect to have one or two in June. So, we estimated it at $3,900. We believe we can transfer that $1,500 that's mentioned at the bottom to try to offset some of it. And that's where the remainder comes.
And how much, if I might continue, Mr. Chairman? How much of your budget at this point in the year do you still have that's unexpended?
In total?
In total.
In total. Good question. Let me try that.
You know, are there other places we could take this from, if we've got a?
No, we went through that very thoroughly last week.
We're, we're already need to do, we think we'll probably end up doing a little more shifting, but the main one is in training. And training is required for the board, and the state has not told us if the normal June face-to-face training is happening. It has not happened in the last two years, I guess, because of COVID. So, there's some potential to have that $1,500 or so there. We know that Tenille's going to one training soon. But whether the entire board will go off to their multi-day training, we don't know. So, that's one potential place. But other than that, it's, we didn't, you know, we, we went through it. We didn't find much.
How much are we still spending to pay people to move our machines on, prior to Election Day?
Well, for before and after Election Day, that typically is $1,600.
Per election?
Per election.
So, if we have a primary and we have a general election, you're looking at $3,200?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, as you know, that Susan and I have been talking about the insurance on the movers. She may have brought that up, I don't know. But we changed how they move, so that they move it in smaller groups, so we're in better alignment there with their insurance. They're moving a lot of expensive equipment, as you know. You guys paid for it.
Mr. Hank.
Well, I, this, one thing on the primary, I have it from other sources that fifth district's having a convention, not a primary.
For which party?
Republican. And then on the moving, it's, it's like, I, I have trouble with that one. I know that other counties use their county employees to move the machines and aren't shelling out extra money. Why, what is the reasoning behind our county having to pay for moving when we have, could do it with county personnel?
Well, we've tried that, and they were not really reliable. They only could carry one, two machines at a time. One time they showed up with the help, was that they were in orange jumpsuits, so, and they were not secure. And we need, we need them all out at a certain time, all back at a certain time.
So, one proposal we put forth last year that we didn't agree to go forward on was to have the county move them one way and the movers that we hire move them the other way. So, the most critical time, of course, is getting them to the precinct so they can be set up at, for 5:00 AM on Election Day. And so, we were proposing that we use the movers for that direction and use county employees to bring them back. Particularly now that we have the cages, we know that they're more secure. The carts that you've probably seen when you've gone to vote, those big red carts are, we call them cages. They're easy carts is their official name. And they do lock and they do keep at an extra layer of security to the equipment. So, we certainly could look at whether it makes sense to try to do a split and see how it goes and then try to go forward from that, if that works.
Who moves a briefcase with the data in it?
The what?
I'm sorry?
The briefcase.
What do you mean, the briefcase? I don't know what you're referring to.
With all of the, the data's been collected from each precinct and all?
Oh, the chiefs move all of their information back at night. It doesn't have, it has the ballots. It doesn't have what I would call data collected together. There's no, other than the tapes. So, yes, yeah, I guess you'd call that data. So, the chiefs bring it back the same night, and they check in with us at the office. And then it goes into our locked room that's behind my office.
So, there's no security there?
I'm sorry?
There's no security on that part, but yet it's only all previous activities associated with that?
That's true. In terms of, we don't send out the sheriff to accompany them or anything. Sometimes they come with someone else, sometimes they come by themselves. Sometimes they come in two cars if they're coming with someone else. But no, we don't try to escort them or anything.
Well, you know, in the, in the, under the title of basic economics, it would definitely seem to me that using county personnel would be more than suffice to exchange from one destination to a next, to the next. You're talking about the time, it might not, I don't have revel in it, is get everyone on there at the same time. What's the purpose of that?
No, no, not at the same time, but just making sure that they do get there Monday afternoon, so that the chiefs very often will go over, unlock the precinct, check things out, make sure all, all their equipment is there, so that they're ready for Tuesday morning.
Seems to me that's just, just so easy. It would be unreal to get it to the appropriate voting place. I think it's be money to be saved there.
Possibly. I don't know what kind of equipment the county has and who would be doing it. Maybe that's something Susan could help us look at further.
I think you definitely need to dig in depth on that.
We have, and all, all we were offered was that small trailer that, that the sheriff had. And they looked at it and they said, oh, they can only get one cage in there at a time.
Well, you know, it would not make any difference if they did not get the one cage in there. If they started out at a designated time, to get to the places in order to fulfill the requirement, then it doesn't make any difference.
This is, this is true. But they said they were not always able to do that. They couldn't promise it. And when we did try it, they did not get them all there in time.
They couldn't promise it?
I, obviously, this is before my time, so I don't have a feel for who's involved in doing this. Is, is that something you know, Susan? You know, who would, who would we be calling upon?
We would have to sit down and work that out.
Okay.
I think those cages are locked, though, right?
Yes, they are.
So, any mention of who moves them, really in the issue of security?
No, it's become, it's definitely become better with the cages.
Not, not, not like, not like it was before. No, you're right. It's all, it's all, everything's in one cage, one precinct.
Now, within the confines, or should I say, the interior of your budget? How much money is put in there for poll workers?
For poll workers, it is typically $26,000 for the year.
Okay.
And to answer, I believe it was Mr. Hinkle's question, is that right? Or was it Mr. Hogan's question? Somebody asked, how much did we have left in our budget so far this year? As of the end of the year, not counting the transfers you'll do tonight, we had $32,000 left in the electoral board budget.
Well, the, the quantity of poll workers, I think is absolutely, I can't believe it's that many poll workers stationed at the various polls, that that many people are needed to stand around. Now, it's not gonna hurt a thing in the world if somebody has to wait five minutes. It's not gonna hurt a thing. So, I think there's room, big room, for an improvement and don't have as many poll workers at these stations. I think that can be worked out very easily. Now, I encourage you to look at that.
We have the code on that, how many we have to have.
You gotta have X number of employee, of poll workers by the code?
By code.
Yes, yes.
So, our, our norm, if you will, is five. And we have some precincts that have more and some precincts occasionally have less.
Let me ask, uh, Mr. Latch.
Um, I, I'm having trouble connecting the internet right now.
I can, I can tell you what the code is.
If you want to defer them, it won't help me. I'm having trouble connecting the internet right now.
Oh, sorry.
If you want to defer the matter, I'll be glad to research it for you.
Please do. Board agree with that?
Minimum by code is three. But three doesn't give you, you have to have three people in there at all times. That would be, for 15 hours, nobody would get a break.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, I, I think there are probably, we're getting down in the weeds too far on what their actual request is tonight. But I do think there are maybe places that we could look to find some of this funding. And if we need batteries, we need batteries, okay? I get that. Uh, I do question why maybe we want the batteries in the budget to begin with. I do think, I don't think it's prudent to go ahead and, if we don't even know there's gonna be a primary yet, let's hold off on that. And when, if there is a primary, we'll pay for it, obviously. This isn't something that has to be decided tonight, I take it?
Uh, not on the primary, but we have to, as I said, we have to basically spend the first couple of things, whether they're approved tonight or not. They have to be done by.
You can't wait a month?
We've gotta get in the queue before, so the machines are gonna be ready. So, yeah, we're trying to schedule it now.
I'd say you got 20, how much left in your budget?
We have $32,000.
You got $32,000, and that, you got $32,000 to spend, and then, do you run short? We'll take care of it before you run, run out. But, I, I'd like to see some more figures about where our money's being spent. I don't have a problem with the line item transfer, if that's where she wanted to go. It's already in the budget.
Yes.
But if you're asking us to move it from, um, where are we moving it from? You wanna go to ballot printing, where's it coming out of?
It's just a line item. But, um, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hogan, can I address your question?
Sure.
The printing of the ballots, I noticed in that line item, there's a balance of $2,400. Is that correct? So, we may already have that money to cover.
Uh, yeah, well. Balance that I show is $4,300.
Well, if you look over in the, yeah, in the expenditures year-to-date, that's what you spent the first printing. So, you have enough, right?
That's correct. So, that's where I thought that even with a dual primary, we could still afford to take some money from that.
So, what's the, the, the transfer request? From what line item would it be moved, coming out of $1,500? And so, it's leaving, where's it coming from and where is it going?
It's leaving printing and binding of ballots 3006. And it would be going to professional services 3002.
So, you're asking to take money out of printing ballots? And then, at the bottom of the page or at the top of the page, you want more money to go to printing ballots?
No, that's ballot preparations. They're actually different things. The services to create the ballots are, in my opinion, rather expensive, but they are what they are. They go along with the machines and the vendor that we have for the machines. And what they do is they create all the ballots in their software. They give them to us for proofing. We approve them, the state approves them. They go ahead and make us sample ballots, and then we put in our order for printing the ballots. In addition to that, they press votes, which under disability law is a required tool. That, you know, I'm sure you've seen it off to the side. It's a machine about this big, and it's for the disabled voters. And they can either vote by braille, they can vote with large print, they can vote by audio. And unfortunately, it costs us a fair amount of money, and it's rarely used. But it is part of the law.
Okay. So, I see two parts here. Number one, uh, is there a motion to transfer $1,500 from 1301 to 13, from 1301-13, uh, 306, excuse me, to 1301-3002? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we can move the $1,500 within the budget from the line items presented to where she wants it to go. One second.
Motion been duly made and second, discussion. We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Now, the request for the additional amount of money, I think it's some pending items out there that we need to get, you all need to get back with us on. It's been asked by our board. So, in saying that, um, we want a table left?
Just defer to next meeting, if you'd like.
Okay. Is that, is that the wishes of the board to defer next meeting? Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Susan, do you have us on the agenda also for talking about the polling locations briefly?
We didn't list that, but I'm sure it would be up to the board.
As long as we're up here, I hate to.
That would be an amendment to the agenda.
Well, we can do it since we're here. So.
It'll only take a few minutes. We're in the process of moving fine locations for Vera and AG and Stonewall. We've got locations, we're just waiting now for the formal paperwork come back from them saying they're willing to have us host us. And when, once we get that together, have it secured, we will put a package together for you. The board has to prove it. And we'll give you all the details of where they're being moved and, and who would affect.
Okay, and let me make sure I got that right. Vera, Stonewall, and CHAP.
No, AG.
AG minus CHAP. They CHAP, too.
Those, those are the three without restrooms.
So, it's Vera, Stonewall, and AG.
And AG.
Okay. Now.
They're all currently in county buildings that have no running water.
I understand. Now Vera, Vera, that's Mr. Jones. That's you.
Technically, it's mine, Mr. Jones.
Is yours? Okay, Mr. Hogan.
Until we make a change.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why we're not. Yeah, that's, that's, that's why we're not gonna commit anything tonight because the open lines are gonna change.
Now, Stonewall's Mr. Hips. AG is who?
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones? Okay. I would ask that you three supervisors talk to this around, to your people, before we make anything happen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I think this will have to come as a recommendation from the Electoral Board and this board would have to approve it before those changes are made. And I think you gotta have a public hearing before that.
It'll be two public hearings.
Well, we're in a redistricting here. Because we're in a redistricting process, identifying polling places is actually part of the redistricting process. We will create polling places when, when you've approved the redistricting ordinance, that ordinance is going to include the polling place, places that are, that are designated for the new census. And so, all of that takes care of itself as part of the redistricting process. So, you know, it, once you're comfortable, I mean, I, I, it may not matter, but, usually the steps are, you figure out your new district lines, then you figure out precincts, if you're gonna have multiple precincts, and then look at your polling places. All of that is then put into an ordinance that this board adopts and then we submit it to the Attorney General's office for approval.
No, that, that's correct. What we're doing now is just trying to secure some location, voting location that we know, even though we've looked at the redistricting, we know will still be within the, those, those precinct lines.
I understand. What I was trying to do, I was get a step forward ahead of the situation.
Sure. We, we'd be happy to talk with the three of you and tell you more about what our plans are and who we met with and whatever we can do to help.
I think it's prudent, I think it's prudent to the citizens that they know first from their supervisors and all in regard to this and check your pulse out there in regards to that. And the reason I say that is because I speak from experience. Experience dictates this, or dictated that. Moving the courthouse district polling place from the school board office to here, it was of grave consequences to the, to the public.
And you're talking, what, five blocks or something?
Yes.
And if you remember, in twenty twenty, we moved Stonewall on a temporary basis. We got sued for doing that.
Yeah, that's right, you're right.
We're totally aware of that.
But, oh, yeah.
That's why that they've built in the public comment periods and hearings.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Uh, I think later on the agenda tonight, we're gonna talk about redistricting and I think we're gonna be asked to set a public hearing the next month. Would, would you all have that information available by next month? That it could be included in that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we will, we're just waiting for one more.
So, there's, there's one that's got a little bit of a sticker. Uh, we're talking to a church that has first told us yes and when we pushed to get it in writing, they said, oh, by the way, our pastor who just left, uh, was actually mistaken and the entire church has to vote on it. So, we're trying to work out the kinks on that. But we expect it to go forward. It's a beautiful location for AG.
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
But we'd be glad to meet with the supervisors anytime you want and talk to you what our thoughts are on, or ration-
We can meet all of us together or one-on-one? You know where to find me, I'm there every day.
Okay, thanks.
Pretty much agenda, I work mine around to you guys' schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Next gentleman's a twenty twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting calendar. Any additions, any deletions, changes?
Um, the meeting calendar itself is what you adopted last, at the organizational meeting?
Yes.
And the only thing that was not mentioned at the organizational meeting is the Juneteenth holiday falls on the third Monday, so that would be an additional month that we would move it to that Tuesday. So, it's January, February and June that it would not be on the third Monday.
Okay, so-
I think that's in your book?
It is.
Okay. And we haven't heard, we talked to the schools and they haven't set a date for the joint meeting, so we can include that on this calendar.
Any other items, concerns? If not, is there a motion to adopt the meeting calendar that's on the agenda with the, with the addition?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the board calendar with the amendment for June to be Tuesday because of the Juneteenth holiday.
Motion made, is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, we're talking about the meeting calendar. But we have a regular scheduled meeting on June twenty-first.
That's election day, if we have a primary.
Okay, so that's debatable then.
They're bylaws, but, deferred again, yeah.
Yeah, you can pick a different day if you want. I mean, you could, you could technically go back to the second Monday if you'd like to do that, when you can't do the third Monday. I mean, you're not, you, you can pick a date if you need to make one.
Do you think it'd be a wise decision to do it now or just wait? I think we would know, at least the Electoral Board would know by when.
March?
March. Okay. What's the pre- uh, prepping for the board? Set a new date or leave as is?
Leave as is till-
I agree.
If we find out in March that there's gonna be an election that day, we can change it then. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Note.
Okay. Motion made. Additional comments? We already voted?
Yep.
Okay, good show. Okay, redistricting update. Excuse me. These glasses changed or something? Budget work session calendar, uh, in the discussion on it. This is on the budget calendar.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I handed out a copy of the draft calendar that's different than what's in the board book and we changed three dates. Um, they're highlighted on the calendar that I handed out. And Tuesdays were conflicting dates for February, March and April, so we changed those to Wednesday, February ninth, Wednesday, March the ninth and Wednesday, April the thirteenth.
Okay. Any discussion on those changes from anyone?
I'm sorry, would you, would you repeat that? So, it's Tuesday, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, February ninth?
You should have a copy of the revised calendar in your handout.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you, never mind.
Discussion? Is there a vote to approve the work session calendar as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the work session calendar as amended.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Now, twenty twenty-one redistricting update, thank you, by the way, Mr. Hogan. The redistricting committee has completed a review of the twenty twenty census data as it applies to local election districts. The committee has selected a leading alternative plan to recommend to the board of supervisors. Attached, we will find the plan, option seven, which shows the changes to three areas of the county, impacting all five districts, along with the option seven report, which details the demographic data for each district. Districts must be within the five percent of the ideal district population, which according to the twenty twenty census data for Appomattox County is thirty-two, twenty-four residents. Option seven achieves this goal with all districts being within the two-point-eighty-two percent of the ideal population. The maximum deviation between the most populated district, which is Fallen River, and the least populated district, which is Appomattox River, is four-point-four-oh percent. The average deviation between districts are thirty-seven residents. In total, three-hundred-and-eighteen residents would switch districts. Prior to the adoption of the redistricting plan, the board of supervisors must hold a public hearing to receive comments and the plan must be submitted to the Attorney General's office for screening. Now, who's gonna want to talk with us? Mr. Hogan, being you on that committee?
Uh, I can, I can, but I think Mr. Rourke is prepared to-
All right.
Kinda give the board a rundown on all the why we are, where we are and how we got here.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, how are y'all doing tonight? Uh, committee has met a couple of times, most recently about two weeks ago. And, uh, the map of option seven, which is the leading alternative put forth by the committee, uh, works off of the existing districts and the existing polling places. So, the news tonight of new polling places, we, we probably need to talk about that a little bit. So, that's quite interesting. But, uh, if you turn to your map, I'll kinda go through the map a little bit there. Uh, we'll start in the upper-left corner where Rec Island and Piney Mountain meet. Uh, in that area, we moved, the committee moved seventy-eight people from Rec Island over into Piney Mountain. And we're talking about the area near Stone Ridge Road and Trinity. Uh, it's a total of six census blocks. And as Mr. Hogan and Mr. Jones can attest to, looking at the maps, you really don't get to make a lot of choices there. The blocks are what the blocks are. So, when you pick a block, uh, you know, it, it changes things and it might not be exactly where you want it, but it, it, you know, the blocks are based off of, of physical features such as roads or creeks, uh, rivers, those types of things. So, there are seventy-eight folks moving from Rec Island to Piney Mountain in that area. If you move over towards Vera, uh, we're talking about moving eighty people from Appomattox River into the Piney Mountain, uh, district. The problem the committee had when we started were there were many more people in Fallen River District and they, we were very short in the Piney Mountain District. Those two districts are not connected. So, thus, we had to spin and, and impact all five districts to get the people from one, one area of the county, being Fallen River District, over into the Piney Mountain District. So, right there, bordering Hollywood and coming down just past Mini Ball Lane. Uh, and there's a couple of creeks in there that are, that form the back border of that. But there's two census blocks there with eighty folks in them. Unfortunately, uh, those eighty folks are not distributed equally between those blocks. Most of those folks are in that Mini Ball area. So, that, that picks up, that's why you kinda had to get that second census block in that area. Then if you move, uh, south, uh, down towards Chap, uh, that's where we, we kinda impacted three districts there, Fallen River, App River and Courthouse District. So, we, we impacted three census blocks going from Courthouse into the Appomattox, uh, River area. Uh, what we did is we, we, the line for the Courthouse District would kinda back up to Willow Oak and Trent Hatchery. So, it would move back, uh, from where it is now, up basically up to that Trent Hatchery, Willow Oak area. From Fallen River to Appomattox River are three census blocks that move a hundred-and-five people. So, there, there's a total there of about a hundred-and-sixty people in this little grouping here. And we bring Appomattox River over to Cub Creek Road, down to Chestnut Grove and we use Rock Spring. That, that's kinda the border there. So, those are the three areas of the county, of the districts that were impacted. And you can, if you flip over, you can see how that's distributed out. Uh, like Mr. Carter read, you know, the, the ideal population for each district is three-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four. Uh, the goal is to be, you have to be within five percent plus or minus. And the maximum deviation, according to, uh, I guess it's the Attorney General and those folks, is a maximum deviation of five percent from the, your most populated to your least populated. So, we've achieved that through this, uh, alternative that the committee has put forth. And I will answer any questions that you may have. The go, the goal from here is to set a public hearing, move forward with that, work with county attorney to put together that ordinance that he was talking about. And then that will have to go to the Attorney General's office for review.
Any questions for Mr. Rourke? Any concerns?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
The only thing I would add from being on the committee is that, you know, when we, our first stab at this, we thought we were gonna get by with moving twenty-seven people. And the five percent, uh, everything kinda fell in line and then we thought we needed a, had to be under a ten percent maximum deviation rule because we still had quite a bit of difference between Fallen River and Piney Mountain. We got down to eight. I thought that was good. And then we got notified that it'd be under five. And there really just wasn't any way to do that without affecting, like you said, you kinda swinging around and moving people from, we had to get folks from Fallen River to Piney Mountain. There's no way to do that without going through another district.
And, and we actually tried that. We, we, we tried making a direct connection, uh, going-
We tried to.
Through the poli- com- through the police tower area, right there, Opel Road and everything, but-
But then that affected a polling precinct that we didn't wanna do and, um, it says three-hundred-and-eighteen people. It may or may not be three-hundred-and-eighteen voters because we're, but we're dealing on population, not registered voters. So, if you got a house with three kids in it, you know, uh, it's not-
Might be five people, but it's only two voters.
You know, so maybe we're only affecting a hundred voters, we don't really know. But we did try to affect as few people as possible to get within our needed percentages.
Sounds like you all had a, uh, a very good meeting, and meetings, I should say. Job, good job.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I guess with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that, um, we set a public hearing, uh, for next month, February twenty-second for comment on the option seven leading alternative plan.
Motion made, is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? All right, gentlemen, moving right along. School supplemental appropriation requests, FY twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two security grant. The Appomattox County Public Schools are requesting an appropriation of the following school security equipment grant, one-hundred-five-thousand-six-hundred dollars, which is no local funds are required. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we appropriate the hundred-five-thousand-six-hundred dollars that the school requested.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? We have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Next, the school supplemental appropriation requests, FY twenty-one through twenty-two, USDA emergency operating calls for school nutrition programs. The Appomattox County Public Schools is requesting an appropriation of USDA emergency school nutrition funds included in section seven twenty-two of PL one-one-six stroke two sixty of the Consolidated Appropriations Act. And once again, no new local funds are required. Is there a motion?
Chairman, I move we appropriate the eighty-two thousand, eighty-five, twenty-one for the school nutrition as requested.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Next, the school supplemental appropriation requests, FY twenty-one to twenty-two, federal cares act funds. The Appomattox County Public Schools is requesting an appropriation of federal cares act funds to the following, as you see listed there, with a toll of six million, five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and thirteen cents. And no new local funds are requested. Any discussion on this one? If not, is our motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. This is their third round of cares funding that the school system's got, is that right?
I think that's correct. Some of this may be re-appropriated funds too that weren't appropriated into FY twenty-two budget.
Okay, but all this is coming out of the
Cares funding.
Federal cares money, it's just, it's got to pass through us.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Further discussion? We have a roll call vote, Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Henkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Next, gentlemen, it's county employee raises and bonuses. At the December meeting, board of supervisors meeting, sugge, uh, I suggested that the board consider the increased cost of living expenses and provide either salary increase or bonus to the county employees. The board requested to defer this discussion to the January meeting so their staff could determine the amount of the, what the cost would be increased. A staff report will provide it at the meeting. Ms. Adams.
Okay, before you, um, the, the way I understood at the last meeting is that there could be a proposed bonus or salary increases. So I gave you scenarios of the bonus and then a five percent increase, six point two increase, seven percent or ten percent. So there are five columns of numbers to determine if any of those you would like to take into consideration.
Yeah, just for clarification to me, Ms. Adams.
Yes, sir.
The proposed bonus category.
Uh huh.
First one, had man four employees, four thousand dollars, so we're talking about a thousand dollars?
Yes, thousand dollar bonuses and part-time, five hundred, um, greater than sixty hours and part-time less than sixty hours, two fifty. And that was just a working document so that I could provide you with some numbers. You know, it'd be discretionary, what you would like to do.
At the sixty hours, it equates to fifteen hours a week. So that's a day and a half, a day, a little less than two days. How much of a difference, uh, would it be, that much of a difference if we said sixty-four? And made it two, two days a week in lieu of a day and a portion? Would that be much?
No, no. In fact, you only, you have twelve employees that are less than sixty hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Personally, you know, this is, it's something I asked for, I think others on board also, because of the work performed by the county's employees. And county employees is defined that of the ones that go by the county co, county, uh, uh, what do you call it?
Handbook?
Handbook, thank you.
Employee handbook.
Yes. Just does not include anybody outside those parameters. Uh, and all this is coming forth because of what the pandemic has put upon the county, the members, I should say, the employees, of what they've had to experience. I think it's duly, duly important that we recognize these, these fine employees for the job that they've done and was willing to do. Now, I'm saying that, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henkel.
I would say yes. In today's economy, that they, we need to take care of our employees. And I do know that we're losing lots of our employees to other counties. My question is, how much would these increases, increases affect our revenue? In other words, what's the delta right now between expenses and revenues? Is it something that would, or how bad would these increases affect our, our revenue? Let's put it that way, I guess is the way to put it.
Right now, you have the operating reserve, that we have money in there that would, you wouldn't have to appropriate new funds. It's in the operating budget that would cover the bonuses. I think it may be beneficial if the board deems so that the salary increases, maybe we look at the time that we work on the budget. Because I think we'll be getting additional requests based on the state, whatever recommendations they make.
Well, I guess really the base of my question is that if we give the employees raises, will we have to raise taxes? That's, I guess that's where I'm really coming from.
No, no. As you know from our, we had a really good audit report in December, so we have a healthy reserve fund.
Thank goodness.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
I couldn't say anything any better about what you've already said about our employees. And with inflation, yeah, I mean, we need to do, I understand we, we need to do something for our employees. I do have a concern about a six percent or more increase in salaries in the middle of a budget year. Yeah, we could afford it this year, but can we afford it next year? That's the only thing that bothers me about the, you know, we gave a five percent raise already in this budget. If we double that, that's not just an increase this year, it's an increase next year and a year after that, and a year after that. I'd like to see that in a budget stretched out to see what we can afford. I, I think the bonuses, we've got the money to cover that. I have no problem with doing that now. It's just, I think our employees deserve it. I'd love to give everybody a six percent raise. I'd like to give them all a ten percent raise. But we got to make sure we got the money to do it and can do it in a financially sound way.
Mr. Hips, any comment?
No, I, I feel the same way. Totally separate issues, the salary increase to talk about during our budget meetings in February. And the, uh, the one-time bonus, I'm fine with.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor, the bonus.
Okay. So we're looking at, uh, the bonus category. Which one, the total amount was what, Ms. Adams?
Seventy-one.
Seven, I got it, thank you. Seven one thousand, eight hundred, seventy-five dollars.
Plus, you would want to add the part-time to that number, I'm sorry I didn't add that.
Okay, the part-time.
If, this is the board's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Eighty-six, eight, seventy-five?
Eighty who?
Eighty-six, eight, seventy-five.
Eighty-six, eight, seventy-five.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henkel.
I'd move that we issue bonuses to the employees, full-time and part-time, as listed here by the county administrator for a total of eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. Is that second?
Second.
Motion been duly made and seconded, further discussion? We have a roll call vote, Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Henkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Okay, eight A, gentlemen, was the MOU for the town of Pamplin? Does everybody have a copy of this in front of them?
They do.
Okay. You have to look at, look at the, uh, the handout. And in summary, Ms. Adams, what we're saying here?
Basically, it's the same, it mirrors the same MOU that you had adopted with the first round of the utility funds from the cares act. It's no new local money. And I will say that the town of Pamplin did return funds from the first round that we sent back to the state. So they've been in total compliance with the restrictions, the grant restrictions.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is the same thing we did for the town of Appomattox. So I would make a motion that we, uh, adopt, is this a MOU? Adopt a memorandum of understanding with the town of Pamplin concerning distribution of COVID-nineteen ARPA funding for municipal utility assistance.
Motion duly made, is that second?
Sir.
Further discussion? Let's have a roll call vote, though. Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Henkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Okay, gentlemen, next we're moving to our consent agenda, which includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order to which they were removed from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of the consent agenda. And I hope everyone's had the opportunity to review the consent agenda. Is anyone having, excuse me, any questions, concerns? If not, is our motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion duly made, is that second?
Second.
Discussion? We have a roll call vote, Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Henkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Mr. Ladsden?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I wanted to at least bring up again briefly, a while back, we had talked in passing about a cigarette tax and whether we were interested in doing so. The state has since been promoting, and in fact, four districts have been formed that your localities bind together and create a board. That's a multi-jurisdictional board because it makes it cheaper for collection. You know, you have one entity doing the collecting for all the different localities. I did look, though, as far as I can tell, nobody in our region has moved forward towards a cigarette tax board. The state web, Virginia tax website, has the current boards that are functioning. There's no, as far as I know, nobody around us has started that process unless somebody's heard something that I haven't heard.
I think Nelson is looking to join Alamooral and up towards Charlottesville.
Well, and that's, yeah, that's the Blue Ridge one, that's Albemarle, Augusta, Charlottesville, Levanna, Green, Madison, and Orange.
The only thing I read was in the paper, Nelson voted to join it, then they voted not to. And I think now they voted to go back in, but I, I could be wrong, but.
So anyway, I don't know if it's something you want more information on? You want to wait and see if somebody in our region initiates creating a board? You know, I don't, I don't know if we want to initiate creating a board. I just, just see if it's something you want to have further discussions on or not.
I guess we definitely need to find out a little bit more about the definition of a board.
Well, think, think of it as, as a, a collecting authority, basically. Just what it is, is the board becomes the collecting agency and then distributes the revenue. So that the, what happens when you, when you initiate a tax, cigarette tax ordinance, is there's a stamp put on the pack. And then they track the sales in the various localities and distribute the, the revenue to the localities, keeping whatever the costs to the administration are. So we get slightly less money, but then we don't have to manage the collecting of the tax.
Or, or the stamp.
Or the, well, the, all of that, exactly. Well, the, the wholesaler has to put the stamp on there. But we'd be the ones tracking all of the tax collections and all that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Would, I know the town, I think the town has a cigarette tax, right? So if, if this board were to implement a cigarette tax, would that be on top of the one the town has? Or would not affect?
Would not affect the town. In fact, uh, Orange County, for example, the town of Orange has a tax. So Orange County set their tax exactly the same. So nobody would be incentivized to go to one place or the other to, to buy cigarettes.
I think, gentlemen, that it'd be very prudent that as a, as a source of revenue, it's better like sales tax, you know? If you don't smoke, you don't pay it. Sales tax, unlike gasoline or anything else, if, if you don't use it, you don't pay it. So like to me, it's a fair tax. Mr. Henkel.
Mr. Chairman, my only concern is, and, and this is my own personal observation, is that the people who seem to do the most smoking are the ones who least can, should, can afford to go out and buy them. So to me, it might be putting another burden on those of our citizens who are already or at a, not at a financial situation where the tax would be beneficial to them or be a burden to them too. That's my only concern.
Any other concerns, thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't, just, just sitting here thinking about low, places where you can buy cigarettes that are not already in town. Ain't that many? So how much would we really get out of something like this? You've got a couple of convenience stores in Pamplin, you've got one in Oakville, one in Vera, um, one in Ben Creek. I don't know where else you could buy cigarettes that's not in town. Off the top of my head. It may be more, but I'm not real sure how much revenue it would generate. Just
Well, that's a thought.
Going to that there.
That's a thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henkel.
If my other question would be, would this apply just to cigarettes or would also apply to vapor, vaping supplies?
Not just cigarettes.
The cigarettes?
Just cigarettes. That's a good question, that, because vapors really being utilized now.
What is the ta, what is the tax amount?
Well, you can, you can set any amount, I think up to fifty cents a pack.
Any other discussion?
And then if you join a regional group, that each locality in the region can have its own rate. So joining a regional group doesn't force you to have a regional rate. So just
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henkel.
What is the town's rate, out of curiosity, do we know?
I did know. But I have forgotten. I don't know. It escapes me. Anyway, it, it doesn't sound very, very promising from, from the discussion I've been hearing. So one way we can put this to bed is, is our motion?
Well, you don't have to do anything if you want to put it to bed.
Okay.
You only got to do something if you want to keep it going.
I was gonna put, but then nobody make a motion. I think it's consensus then, that the board would not pursue this and if others, am I correct?
I would say, Mr. Chairman, not at this time unless we get some more information that, you know, we're gonna make a windfall to help pay for the school or something. That'd be something different, something to talk about, but.
Or employee raises.
Or employee raises. If we can fund employee raises by taxing cigarettes, we'll talk about it. I don't know if it's gonna be that much money.
You're right, FYI, Ms. Adams found out it's twenty-seven cents a pack, not a ten, I'm charged. So glad I
If another locality, you know, wanted to talk to us about creating one, I, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to listening to them, but
Right.
It's not big on my agenda.
Mr. Ladsden, anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Adams?
Yes, sir. I gave you a couple of items. One was American Civil War Museum invite. So they've invited you to something, I think it's only twenty-second, I passed out my copy. We did reach out to the town in, um, the town about a county joint meeting. And the last response was, we would wait to hear from the mayor. So I haven't received anything, but I'll continue to work on it if it's still the pleasure of the board to have that joint meeting. And something we need to think about is, does the board want to have a retreat to look at our priority funding this upcoming year? And if so, when would you like to have it? You want it on a weekday, weekend day, half a day, whole day? You know, give us some direction and, and we'll plan something.
Okay, gentlemen, thoughts?
How long do you think it might take?
Well
What are you thinking?
We, we do it several
Is it a couple hours, or is this all day?
I'm thinking four hours, we can do the, do the priorities.
This would be outside the budget work sessions we've already got?
Yes. This would be leading into the budget, and, um, I know we've got some projects that we probably are gonna need to discuss this year, so that would be an opportune time to bring those up and, you know, look at all different areas and what's important to the board as far as focusing on funding as we, as we start to prepare the budget.
Might have to be a weekend for me, unless it was in the evening.
Maybe a Saturday morning.
At the midnight hour.
7:00 AM.
Good boy.
I already got a 7:00 AM meeting.
Or an evening, you know, that would be better. But we would need at least, I would think, three to four hours.
I want to go along with your schedule, what you're talking about 10 o'clock at night, 11:00.
I mean, I'm, I, yeah, I could, yeah, I could make it happen if we do it on a weekday. Uh, make a late day for staff, but, um, if it's a Saturday morning, I could make that happen, too. But, uh, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, it sounds like a Saturday morning, is that suited everybody? And Ms. Adams, when do you think that you have everything, uh, an agenda for that?
Well, it, we've got to move rather quickly on that because we need to do that prior to starting our budget work sessions. So, the next couple of weeks.
I'd sleep Saturday. You, you will, uh, communicate with...
We'll work on that this week and send out some emails. Um, in fact, while you're here, either Saturday... The Saturday's too soon, so we really need to look at the 29th. Is that okay with everyone?
It's time.
So far.
Okay. So we'll focus on that date, then. If we need to change it, we can change it.
Probably snow. I'll say that'll probably snow.
Oh.
I'll have to look at my retirement calendar.
And I wanted to, um, give a shout out to the shelter. It's up and operational. We currently have 12 dogs that we're housing that have been picked up. Also, I sent out a, uh, an email about the Tumblr fundraiser. So if you don't have that link, let us know, we'll send it to you. If you're interested in ordering something, $5 from that co, goes back to the shelter from every sale of a Tumblr. And, um, we had the Betty White fundraiser this past week. Um, it was a huge success. The animal shelter manager, she made a list of things on the Amazon wishlist, and we received over 30 bags of dog and cat food, um, a small and a large scales that was needed for the shelter, cleaning supplies, kitten milk replacer, dog toys, harnesses, collars, leashes, you name it. So everything on that wishlist was, was purchased, but we had no idea who did it. It was all through the, as a result of the Betty White fundraiser. So that was a huge success, and, and I have to say, the, the manager's doing a great job. Um, she's in the process of looking for a part-time person. We have not hired that position. We had a couple people that we'd made an offer to, and they either got a full-time job or it just didn't work out for them. So, um, anyway, we're off to a good start. Knock on wood, I hope it stays like that.
Sounds like.
And, um, we did meet with the town. Ms. Marshall and myself met with them about the corrective action to the audit that the auditor mentioned at the last meeting. And so we agreed on a plan, and the county's having to submit the corrective action letter to the auditors. So hopefully that matter is resolved. And I also want to thank the maintenance and landfill crew for the last couple of days, the last two snowstorms. Especially this past, when the ice stormed, they were chiseling ice and doing everything in their means of Saturday and Sunday to make sure that we were operational today. So kudos to them. Their hard work. That's all.
Any questions for Ms. Adams? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next we have reports and informa, informational items that we have before us. As you can see, I don't need to read them out. I think let's engage into supervisor concerns. Mr. Hipps?
Uh, just a little sidebar after the, all the roads were taken care of. There was a lot of what I call mailbox casualties. And, uh, many, many, um, just from the, uh, you know, the airborne ice and snow, as it, as it went, not from the plows hitting them in most cases, but, uh, you, people can file a claim with VDOT and get a replacement mailbox, and VDOT will install it for them. There's some people that might not want to do that because it's gonna take some time. I know at, uh, I think 9:00 AM this morning, there's something like 36 mailboxes. So probably, I'm gonna guess double that. There's four just on my road, and then I saw some on the, um, side road. But either way, I think that, you know, an important thing for, you know, maybe some elderly folks or people that don't have the means to replace the mailbox, you know, the, the labor and things like that, but they can call the VDOT, 1-800 number to, uh, maybe we can put that on the county webpage.
Okay.
Uh, they can call and make a claim at, at the 800, 800 number to start that process.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chair, yes, I'd like to respond, uh, to Mr. Henkel, your concerns about, uh, whether I would be biased in the school division. I thought about it when I went home, and I started compiling a list of what I've done in this community over 40 years. I came here in 1980, and I picked up a, um, uh, station wagon of little kids, poor kids, uh, to try to make their life better. I was appointed by the Board of Supervisors, hired to be, uh, the Director of Youth Services here, Crime Prevention. I've been so in the trenches in this community, so much so that I've had people to call me up, write out a check for 50,000 for what I was doing for young people in this community, for 100,000 for young people. I ended up getting hired in the school division, and when I was hired in the school division, the students voted me, uh, one of their top teachers, uh, at the high school. And, um, not only that, over the years, I've been appointed by Governor Allen, for example, to Manufacturing Board. Basically, what I'm saying, I've been so involved with young people in this community. I don't want, I want you to be able to tell your constituents that I've been heavily invested in young people before I ever got on the school board. I'm probably the only school board member who started an after-school program for 70 kids, Edwist Kids, Fadham Dunner, rode on the bus to be the bus monitor. Had nothing to do with, uh, me being on the school board. My wife and I, she passed away December of, um, 2020. Congressman Rivelman was kind enough to fly a flag over the Capitol, Washington DC, in honor of the work that my wife and I had done with young people in this community. So I just wanted to make it crystal clear that, uh, I will not be placed in a cons, perception box, that, you know, this guy is about the school. I'm not about the school division per se. I am about young people. And so I, I thought it was very good that, you know, we could clear that air, and I wanted to make sure I could appropriately respond to you. And I'm gonna make sure that I respond on, um, newspaper, um, Twitter, um, Facebook, whatever, just get it out there, you know? I probably have 100 things I've done in this community, uh, working with young people. Okay, so I just wanted to be crystal clear that I'm here to serve the, my constituency, the entire county, but at my heart, it's always been young people, and that's not gonna change. So if I'm advocating for young people, I don't want people to have that perception that I'm advocating for a school division. So I just wanted to make sure I could set the record straight from my perspective, and I'm gonna make sure that, um, your constituents understand. I'm gonna make sure I get it out there, so, so they'll know that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henkel.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that, Reverend Jones, and, and I'm well aware of what you've done in this community, and, and especially, not only with kids, but your museum work. And I wasn't doubting your work, I just, we just had the question. And I appreciate your response. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
The only thing I will add, uh, from Mr. Henkel from last month was the eyesore on Ever, at Evergreen. I think we're still trying to figure out who owns that, uh, half-trailer down there. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm getting calls on that as well. That's, uh, and just thank the staff for what they're doing for the, um, for the ice and snow, and I saw staff out here working yesterday on a holiday, and, and we appreciate them.
Oh, I'll echo the same thing. So I don't need to say anything new, not at all. But, uh, is there anything else coming for the board this time before we go into closed session? Mr. Latsner?
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Apomax County discards, desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, employees, or employees of the public, public body, specifically the registrar's office. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body concerning the Region 2000 suit. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel concerning water agreement with the town. And whereas pursuant to Sections 2.2, 37, 11A, 1A 7, and 8A to the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Apomax County does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters in closed meeting. Need that as a motion?
There's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, so much.
Motion due to may as a second.
Second.
To the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were hurried discussed or considered in the closed meeting?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Yes.
Yes. Back in regular session? Is anything come in the motions to be made from the closed session?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hinkle.
I move that we allow the county administrator to promote a county employee to facilities foreman with a salary of sixty thousand dollars.
Motion's made as our second discussion. We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips. (laughing) Mr. Jones. Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Are there any other motions? Now, the next meeting is February twenty-second and upon